Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Scott, if we could call roll.
Mrs. Albright, she's not here. Mrs. Bell.
Here.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Here.
Mr. Jarrett.
Here.
Mrs. Leoni.
Here.
Mrs. Olsson.
Here.
Scott here, Mr. Strobel.
Here.
And Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
Okay, moving on to the procedures for public participation. If you have a prepared statement to be read to the board, you should have a copy presented to the board president prior to the board being addressed. Comments on agenda items can be made by rising and approaching the microphone and stating your name and address and signing in on the sheet provided. You'll be granted up to three minutes to address the board. Your three-minute time limit will start when you begin to speak. When three minutes are over, you'll be asked to be seated. Any item that is not on the agenda, as well as agenda items acted upon, comments can be made at the designated section at the end of the agenda. Okay, so announcements, we have a couple of agenda edits listed under, we're not voting today, but so these are just for information, under personnel appointments, we have some changes to titles for some of the folks that are being voted upon for classified at the main office at the high school, and they're listed there. There will be an executive session following the meeting to discuss personnel, and with that, I'm going to move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Cooper.
Thank you, Madam President. Couple items this evening. First, administration has started the process of contacting candidates to interview professional staff positions vacated through the resignations and retirements that were approved in previous meetings here to begin district employment commencing with the 2223 school year, so we're in the process of that. Principals are gathering those candidates, and we'll be setting up interviews. Middle school administration continues to update their program of studies, in particular as it relates to the encore courses, and we'll have it finalized for review at our committee, the whole meeting in April. Be speaking more about it at our curriculum instruction committee meeting at the end of the month. High school unity day, which is the second of this 2122 school year, takes place this Thursday from eight to two in the Annex Gym, and the end of the marking period three is just a couple of weeks away here, meaning that our 2122 school year is approaching the home stretch, and we look forward to the end-of-year activities return to resemblance of pre-pandemic normalcy here, so we're excited about that. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. It's not currently on the agenda, but we have reports from our student representatives, if you guys want to.
So the EPC academic, they're beginning two meetings to assess curriculum and instruction and ELA math and SEL slash EBIS extracurricular. They held a family SEL night with over 40 families in attendance. Cultural, K to two students attended the sous-cool at the high school on Friday, March 4. Moving on to the AIC academics, they are preparing for the PSSAs extracurricular. They're going to have an SEL night in the next two or three weeks. Cultural, K two students attended, or two to five students attended the sous-cool at the high school on Friday, March 4.
At the middle, oh, is it on?
Yeah, it's, yeah, just get a little closer, then we're good.
All right, okay, great. At the middle school, academics, the sixth grade math classes are using Speed Hero, robots to practice making shapes and finding area after area of those shapes, seventh grade and eighth graders are using robots for translation and reflection. Extracurriculars, spring sports officially start on the 7th, and cultural unity day was February 10th. At the high school, academically, students are preparing to take the spring AATs for extracurriculars. Student government has begun elections for the 2022-2023 academic year, and culturally, the high school hosts the sous-cool for both the primary and intermediate center, and they're preparing for unity day on Thursday.
All right, thanks. Any board members have any questions for our student reps? Thank you. Okay, moving on, oh, no, no, we're good. Okay, so moving on to finance. Any comments, questions, concerns from the board on anything under finance? Yeah, everything looks like just renewal of contracts we've already had. Anybody have any concerns that you want to talk about? Okay, any public comment on finance? All right, moving on to programs. All we got is graduation date of the 3rd, so any concerns about graduation being the 3rd from the board? Any comments from the public or concerns? Under retirement, under personnel, we got retirements, resignation of Mr. Soden, who is sitting in the audience, not to embarrass him, and got a bunch of leads listed, appointments, like, it's like, there are a lot of, there's a lot of fill-in-the-blank, those blanks should be filled by the time we vote again. Any concerns from the board on any of those? And that includes those changes to the titles of the two folks under classified. Any concerns from the public, any comments on personnel? Moving on to presentations, Mr. Scott.
As of this evening, I have nothing to report.
Okay. There are some folks that intend to speak tonight that sent us copies of their comments for us to include with the board record, so, but they're going to speak, so we'll let them do that later. Okay, BCIU board report, Mr. Jarrett, anything?
I know I had anything you needed to bring up at this time or next meeting this Thursday, 17.
All right, okay. BCTC, Ms. Thompson.
All right, we met on February 23rd. We entered the budget. The individual districts will be responsible for busing this coming school year.
The following one.
They think we can get a better deal from the budget.
Oh, okay.
They're having their summer career camp, 17 person makers. They're doing third through fifth grade visits. They're changing the health and safety plan, March 25th, notification on exposed students will end, April 29th, no contact tracing. And then the next meeting is March 27th.
And we did the board reps up at the beginning, so. Legislative report, Mr. Strobel.
Legislative report?
Yeah, anything?
No. I wasn't, I didn't.
Okay. Other board reports for any, no meetings on the TIF?
I was out of town.
Yeah, no, that's fine, that's fine. No meetings on the TIF?
No.
So, nothing else. Okay, any comments, questions from the board for any of our board reps? Any public comment? Okay, moving on to enrollment, statistics are sitting there. Any concerns from the board on enrollment? Any public comment? Curriculum and instruction, Mrs. Albright isn't here. Would you be able to give a report on what we discussed at the last meeting? I guess that would have been the 28th.
Yes, on the 28th, we talked about that our district is doing a district-wide STEM constitution planning and partnering up with the Berks County Intermediate Unit. We have a team leader, Chris Endy, she's our coach at our middle school, but she's also been our epic catalyst representative with Berks County Intermediate Unit, so the county is trying to advance STEM across the county, and this is just the next step in that, so we're having a team of teachers participate in the planning at the Berks County Intermediate Unit, so that's pretty exciting. And then we talked about middle school programming, and Mr. Towers was here to present, and he gave a lot more detail as to the middle school grade sizing. That I think is on the website as well. And then we just talked about the summer academic actions planning that is underway, and the grade six through 11 will be at the high school, ESY will be at the middle school, and pre-K to five will be at the primary center.
Okay, thank you. And next committee meeting for CNI will be March 28. Any questions from Ms. Owens on that? Any public comment on curriculum instruction? Extracurricular?
Wait, this gentleman.
Oh, I apologize, you can go ahead and come up.
Thanks, I didn't send anything.
That is fine.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody, my name is Richard Miller, I've been here before. I just had a comment on the busing. I understand you're looking for more affordable outfits, and things are, are we looking in this, I imagine we're looking in this area right here, but that's my question, is how, as far as affordable right now, it's kind of hard to afford things reasonably because they're expensive.
Yeah, I will, you know, if you'd like to get up and give us more detail when the time comes, you know, we do have, we'll be at facilities and transportation in just a couple of seconds. So, if you have more detail, but this, I meant for public comment on, specifically on curriculum and instruction, so.
Well, on curriculum, I'm just wondering how we rate with our children as far as reading, writing, math, speech, and spelling and things like that, pretty basic.
Okay, all right. I will say that our next, our next committee meeting, the 28th, we will be, there will be a presentation on where we are statewide compared to the rest of the state, and that will be on the 28th, so we'll be getting that report very soon.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions about curriculum instruction? Moving on to extracurricular.
We had our meeting earlier this evening. Major sports have completed, they are complete. We have wrestling, Tucker Hogan got third place, and Howser got sixth place, and they're both Tuckers in fifth grade and Kings in ninth grade, so hopefully we will continue to see them build. In girls' swimming, we had the girls that could skate, and in boys' swimming, we have 15th and 17th, and they're also upperclassmen, so we expect more improvement with that. Girls bowling, we won the county championship. They were both in strong state, so.
Yeah, that's tough. You wouldn't, you know, well, maybe other people would think so, but our competition in bowling is pretty stiff, yes.
Great sports started today at the middle school and last week here at the high school. We are looking for a middle school assistant softball coach. We are working on, they're going to be working on the tennis courts and basketball courts, working on power washing and repiling those, some work needs to be done with the concession stands, and that's what we talked about.
Okay, next meeting is April 11th, okay. Any questions from the board for Ms. Bell? Any, any public comment on extracurricular? Facilities and transportation, Mr. Strobel, long list.
I go over as much as I can, because it's a pretty long meeting.
I know, it's a lot.
Pretty long meeting. High school and middle school had a component failure, so we have a lot of aging heat and air conditioning equipment, so that component was, that repair was ordered. There is some, a few others. Middle school roof has three, and there was a circulation pump, total around 15, almost $16,000. There's a chiller in the high school, another pump, around $6,000, and these are going to be on our next voting meeting, they were all approved. There's a compressor that needs to be purchased for the middle school, that same chiller area. The ACI playground was removed, and there's, we did approve some elevator testing to be done, hydraulic testing for around $3,060. Door issues at the, was it AIC?
No, middle school.
Exterior door sets that need to be, the keying system needs to be replaced, and so there was a bid on that, you know, because that was $17,400 opposed to that, they're not functioning properly, so there's just things that are going to come along that we just don't have really a choice, we got to take care of.
One thing I just wanted to, because I know the board knows this, but I just, for the folks that are here that don't attend meetings very often, those items that Mr. Strobel's listing that have been approved out of committee, they have been approved out of committee to be voted on by the full board, so the committee doesn't, like, authorize the spending of the funds. I just want you to all, like, understand the difference.
There was some boiler maintenance, which was pretty reasonably priced, to come in and clean all the natural gas boilers and water heaters for the entire district, for just under $4,000 there, that was pretty attractive pricing. Keep our equipment going in the right direction, maintaining. There was, and all the replacement furniture and shelves were ordered for the library registration, the drywalls hung, and we're right about now starting to finish it with the drywall spackle, and we're not, she's suggesting it might be done by the end of the week. There was some storm damage, replacement shingles on the middle school building from high wind. There's a retaining wall over at AIC, rather large, long retaining wall, it's got cap issues and some, so we're going to get additional bids on those, put that for bid, and then for busing and transportation, our FPs will be put back out again. And the next meeting will be 4/11/22.
Okay. Any questions from the board for Mr. Strobel? Any public comment, like, just, you called that we're going to put the transportation bid out for bid, we're going to put that out for bid again, okay. Any public comment on facilities and transportation?
Oh, well, this is a general.
Okay, we're almost there.
No, 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 but it's about what he's talking.
Okay, go ahead.
Gretchen Markle, first speaker, so, so my question is about water, like, is there any way, like, in the middle school to get, like, there's water that you just put a cup in, and, you know, there's, I guess there's water in the cafeteria, but, but there's only, like, these little triangle cups or little paper cups, is there, and I think they're in the high schools.
Yeah, they do have at the high school.
But is there any way to get them at the middle school? Because water's not, the kids have to pay $2 a water if they get it in the cafeteria.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good suggestion, we'll look into it.
You know, kids have their, you know, their sports.
No, yeah, absolutely.
There's no dispensers there?
We have water fountains, but I don't know if they've even been able to be used.
Do we have filling stations? Mr. Towers, do we have filling stations in the middle school currently, locations?
We currently do not have the filling stations at the middle school, we are, we are in the process of getting them.
Good.
We actually have the process, we were ready and.
Until before COVID, we were ready.
I didn't know anything on COVID, but we were ready to get them installed, and then once that happened, everything got backlog, and we are talking with them, we are in the process of finding the right location.
Good, thank you, we're bringing it up.
But they can, but you are correct, there is the bid in the cafeteria, we do have the central water station.
But if they have a big cup, you can't.
If they have a water bottle, they can fill up with their water bottle, just like they would at a filling station.
Oh, okay.
It's just sticking right underneath, just like that sporting.
Okay, because my son said the water fountains, the water is nasty.
No, yeah, we get it, we're clear on that, yeah.
I think we all agree.
And that's in the cafeteria, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's a great idea.
Okay, anybody else have any comments under facilities, transportation? Okay, moving on to finance, oh, that's me. So, finance committee met February 28th. We had a long conversation about the funding formula. Actually, a citizen came to us to ask some questions about how the funding formula works. The funding formula is showing that we are getting, the percentage of, of the funding that we're getting is less, less per student every year, and we were kind of wondering why that, why is that? And the, it turns out that part, a big key component of the funding formula for our schools from the federal funds comes from information that is collected by the consumer, the consumer, see, I forget the acronym.
The ACS, it's the.
American Consumer Survey. And so, according to the American Consumer Survey, Daniel Boone School District has the highest per capita annual income of any school district in the county, which was news to me, I'm sure it's news to all of you. And so, we went to them and asked, Ms. Haynes went to them and asked, where do you get your information from, and can we do anything to make it more accurate? What we found, what Ms. Haynes, I was told, just found out, was that they actually sent out a paper survey, they send it to a rotating, they choose who that goes out to, probably statistically choosing, like, different areas of the school district, but they choose who they go out to, they don't go out to everyone, and they go out on paper, and then they, they process the ones that they receive. So there is no way for us, as a school district, to increase the pool of people that they interview to find out what that number of annual salary average should be, but the only thing we can do is increase people's awareness that if you are a person that receives that in the mail, that please fill it out, you know, because that's the only thing we can do. There's no way to increase the number of people that gave that information, because their average, that they said that we had for our average annual salary in the school district was, what, 97-ish thousand or 96,000 a year?
90,000, something like that.
Per household.
That was a median for five years.
And it sounded kind of high to me, and, you know, and it was, it was the highest in the county?
Yeah, well, the second highest would go to Boyertown at 83 or 85 or something.
87.
But we found out there's no way for us to fix the data in the past, the only thing we can do is increase awareness going forward that if you receive that paper form in the mail and you live in the school district, please fill it out, because we can't do anything to increase the number of people that they, that they ask for responses for. So, that was all news to me. There was proposed grant information, there is $500 million, $500 million in competitive Department of Energy grant for school improvements that we are going to look into whether or not we might be able to take advantage of any of that. We, this was actually on the agenda last month, I believe, for center stage lighting, we approved that last month.
Yes.
But we did discuss that per hour inspection by our insurance company, we had to make some of those improvements to the lighting and rigging in the high school auditorium. It has already been approved, but that was one of the things we discussed. We also set the date of the budget workshop for March 8th, which also already happened. We had good, good participation from the board for that. We had all of our administration here talking, everybody talked about their budgets. It was just the first pass, you know, we, we asked a lot of questions, asked for a little more detail on some things, I don't even know, you know, like I said, it's just the first pass, and we didn't discuss anything having to do with salaries, it was just, it was the money that we spend on equipment and upkeep and, and our loans, mortgages and insurance and things like that, so. So, that was it. Anybody have, any board members have any questions for me after I talked way too long? Any, any public comment on facilities? No, that wasn't facilities, that was finance. Any public comment on finance?
Mr. Miller.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Can I do it from here?
Yeah, go ahead, as long as you can talk a little loud, we're good.
When you, excuse me, when you said 500 million, was that throughout all of Berks County competition on that?
That was for the entire, it's Department of Energy, so.
Or the whole, the whole state of that city?
It's a huge grant, and you took that for the grant application and the media's being there.
Okay, thank you.
And our next meeting will be March 28. Any other public comment on finance? Okay, moving on to policy, Mr. Scott.
Yes, we had our meeting this evening at 5:30 before our meeting here. We discussed three different policies. First one is extracurricular participation by home education students. Second one was comparability of services. Third was our school security personnel, so minor changes to that. Our next meeting will be on April the 11th, and that concludes, we had no second readings tonight.
Okay. Any questions from the board for Mr. Scott? And any public comment on policy? Moving on to technology, Mr. Strobel, it's your show again.
We're moving into the final plans for integrated phone system. The immediate resolved issue was locking down the physical inventory of the phones as they navigate some of the closure supply issues and some challenges here. New system will be approximately 50,000 per year, which includes all the phone calls, video conferencing, and system maintenance, and it represents about $17,000 a year savings, which is primarily from the elimination of maintenance costs of their current systems. The E rate process continued to move forward, pricing for the replacement of the wireless access points in the high school came within our budget projection, and are now working to finalize quantities and determination of locations which need to improve, wired, needed to improve wireless access since the last upgrade seven years ago. Recommendations to adjust the iPad insurance participation cost from 35 to 25 for the next school year, because the account was in good condition, and so we were able to pass that savings back to those that are purchasing the insurance, and $10 for economically disadvantaged students. And we continue to partner with instructional coaching team on technology integration and professional development for the facility as the, as we emerge from the COVID chaos, and the coaching team is working to ensure that we have a solid foundation to build on. The usage of our technology is really extremely high, the students, the teachers, which have been good, and the next meeting will be 3/28/22.
Any board comment or questions for Mr. Strobel? Any public comment on technology? Okay, old business, got the minutes from the meeting on the 28th, any concerns on that? Any concerns on that? Any public comment on the minutes? Okay, new business, I got none. And presentations by the public on any issue?
First, I'd like to say, nice to see all your faces to finally who I've been speaking to the last several months. Several issues that have come up that these things are a freaking joke. My kids getting in trouble at school for not respecting technology. Don't get me wrong, that's wrong. But now, here's where parents are being undermined yet again by the school districts. These iPads are becoming babysitters. We paid money for this crap for our kids to go to school to be babysat.
True.
Why? That's not fair.
I don't, I don't understand, to be what?
Because my-
No, I didn't understand the word, what their, the kids are being what, babysat? Oh, babysat.
With these things. My kids could sit at home doing that. My kids are not technol, technologically evolved. I limit screen time for my kids. So, parents who were ashamed in the last 10 years for putting a piece of technology in their kids' face from day one, that was shamed as being bad parents, you're lazy, you're terrible, whatever. Now, parents who have limited screen time are being shamed and put down because our kids don't have respect for technology. And being told that we need to be on the same level, yes, Mrs. Huster, this is not right. I, we are not on the same page when it comes to this. My kids don't get these at home, they should not be using them all day, every day at school. Also, about that, my daughter got in trouble for downloading a simple picture of Taylor Swift. There was nothing wrong with the picture, honestly. Yet, there's pictures and screenshots and downloads on my daughter's iPad of Huggy Wuggy. Has anybody heard about Huggy Wuggy? This freaking demonic monster chasing you around or trying to chase zombies or whatever it is. That's appropriate, but Taylor Swift isn't. This is not what I need my kids to learn also. Also, I've been informed by other parents that there's the financial responsibility waiver on the website. I was never informed of this, I never signed for it. I certainly did not sign for you to put these in front of my children. I understand once in a while, that's how things go, once in a while, but all day, every day should not be a responsibility. These are used as a tool should the schools shut down for emergency use, not for all day, every day. That's not what it's used for. Next thing I do want to ask, because my kids are at such a young, vulnerable age, is, and I'm sorry if I say this, not word for word, but, Mr. Flowers, would you like to explain why you're asking children what they see when they see you? And correcting them, that is valuable.
Three minutes.
Honestly, you, you want to talk about racism? That is racism being taught.
She shouldn't be directly questioning the administration.
And I, I am sorry that your, your time is up, if you have more-
I said, I said.
If you, okay, thank you.
Do I have to sign again?
No, you're fine.
Chris Markle, Front Street, First Row. Critical race, Marxist-inspired movement in social and political philosophy, originally associated with the work of Frank Reichert School, Dr. T. Lee, on the thought of Karl Marx and Sigmund Freud. Critical theorists maintain that a primary goal of philosophy is to understand and to help overcome the social structures through which people are dominated and oppressed. That's from ThoughtCo.com. Critical race theory is an academic discipline formulated in the 1990s, built on the intellectual framework of identity-based Marxism. Regulated for many years to universities and obscure academic journals. Over the past decade, decade, it has increasingly become the default ideology in our public institutions. It has been injected into government agencies, public school systems, teacher training programs, and corporate human resources departments in the form of diversity training programs, human resources modules, public policy frameworks, and school curricula. There are a series of euphemisms displayed by its supporters to describe critical race theory, including equity, social justice, diversity, inclusion, and culturally responsive teaching. Critical race theorists, masters of language construction, realize that neo-Marxism would be a hard sell. Equity, on the other hand, sounds non-threatening and is easily confused with the American principle of equality, but the distinction is vast and important. Indeed, equality, the principle proclaimed in the Declaration of Independence, defended in the Civil War and codified into law with the Fourteenth and Fifteenth Amendments, the Civil Rights Act of 1964, and the Voting Rights Acts of 1965, is explicitly rejected by critical race theorists. To them, equality represents mere non-discrimination and provides camouflage for white supremacy, patriarchy, and oppression. In contrast to equality, equity, as defined and promoted by critical race theorists, is little more than reformulated Marxism in the name of equality. UCLA Law Professor and Critical Race theorist Cheryl Powers has proposed suspending private property rights, seizing land and wealth, and redistributing them along racial lines. An equity-based form of government would mean the end not only of private property, but also of individual rights, equality under the law, federalism, and freedom of speech. These would be replaced by race-based redistribution of wealth, group-based rights, active discrimination, and omnipotent bureaucratic authority. Historically, the accusation of anti-Americanism has been overused, but in this case, it's not a matter of interpretation. Critical race theory prescribes a revolutionary program that would overturn the principles of the Declaration and destroy the remaining structure of the Constitution.
Your three minutes have passed, so if you want my final point?
The issue that parents have against critical race theories and Marxist ideologies is the basis for teaching our children CRT is like having your children, having children to your house and you show them an inappropriate movie that goes against our core values as a parent. There's another, I'll just hand it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, just, just as a note, you know, we have a lot of folks here and, you know, we do have the three-minute limit, you know, I, you know, I've been in that situation before where I've gotten up to the mic as a, as a parent and I've had something written out and I think it's going to take three minutes and it takes longer. And, you know, so I've, I've been there, but, you know, just when I try, as, as Ms. Markle did, you know, when, when I, you know, give you the three-minute mark and let you know to like get, just give me one final remark and, and be seated. Just if you could do that, that would be respectful of everybody's time. Also, if you do come up, you know, all, all your remarks should be addressed to the board. So, thank you. So, whoever's next?
Uh, Markle, very good. Critical women's theory, excuse me, critical theories in the United States is known today and traced to Karl Marx's thesis of economy, economy and society. Many of these Marxist, Marxist tenets of critical theory have made its way into all shoots philosophies that seek to change society. These include critical gender theory and critical race theory. Many of the phrases or code words of critical race theory have been, have found their way to the education system. I will elicit a few of them tonight and where I found them in Daniel Boone, in Tobias. Unempowering learners to see themselves as being marginalized. It promotes realization of relationships dismantling whiteness, recognizing power and privilege by identity in the February Equity Roundtable, anti-racial. America's leading anti-racist scholar, Ibram X. Kendi. Kendi argues that there is no such thing as non-racist identity and makes clear that racism occurs when there, when, when there is any disparity between races, no matter how minor. In his words, if discrimination is creating equity, then it, then it is anti-racist. Kendi is in fact calling for racism in that phrase. The February Roundtable, the Dana Simmons video. Centring, acknowledging that white voices dominate platforms across society, it can bring more vibrant discussions by including more diverse voices, but in critical race theory can also lead to overt silencing of dissenting certain voices. Collective guilt, and I'm not going to read all of the definitions of these, I'm not running out of time pretty quick. Equity, inclusion, intersectionality. Intersectionality is a framework conceptualizing of a person, group, or people, or social problem as affected by a number of discriminations and disadvantages. It can, it takes into account people's overlap identities and experiences in order to understand complexity of prejudices, prejudices they face. Intersectionality produces more problems among groups. That's in the Daniel Boone webpage on Rob Flowers's page. Racial identity, the Equity Roundtable. Social mo, social learning, that's on the DB webpage and the February Equity Equity Roundtable in the Simmons video. Social justice, Rob Flowers, that's in the web page. Spirit murdering, coined by Patricia Williams and an early CRT proponent who first conceptualized spirit murdering as a product of racism, which not only inflicts pain, but also a form of racial violence that steals and kills the humanity and spirits of people of color. That's in the Dana Simmons video and Equity Roundtable. Structural racism, that was in the Equity Roundtable. White privilege, Equity Roundtable.
Uh, we're, we're up to three minutes, so if you could just give me a last, last point?
I'm sure that I can find more examples of this destructive ideology from critical race theory and it could be done covered in Daniel Boone schools. I ask that they be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Valerie, Emily. I'm just going to give you guys just a brief history and then some examples that's been rolled out at least in the schools from what we know of. I'm going to give you some background on what I, what I found out regarding the Georgia Gaia stones and how some of the Freckle readings resemble some of this ideology. In 1980, the Georgia Gaia stones were erected. They resemble the Ten Commandments. They're like these big stones that are federally guarded. We don't know who paid for those to get erected, but the federal government does protect the facility. And as you're going through the ideology and what it is in its states, I'm actually going to read each of their counterfeit commandments and how to relate to some of the readings that we found in the middle school. The first commandment, maintain humanity under five million in perpetual balance with nature. That would require removing 80% of Earth's population. Diet reproduction wisely, improving fitness and diversity. We hear diversity used a lot. How is this measured? How is diversity measured and is it pertaining to sexuality and race? I don't know. Unite humanity with a living new language. For example, our English language changed quite significantly. You hear phrases like "my truth," and that's really someone's experience, someone's opinion. But when you hear the word "truth," "truth" represents a constant. So, it's the change of language. Will passion, faith, tradition, all things with temper reason? Who determines what is and is not temper reason? Protect people and nations with fair laws and just courts. What is fair and to what comparison? Let all nations rule internally resolving external disputes in a world court, one world government. Avoid petty laws and useless officials, well, we saw a couple of years later, defund police, minimize what is considered a crime and reduce that to a petty crime. Balance personal rights for social duties, well, we saw that. Mask up, vaccinate up, but the flag the whole. Christ, truth, beauty, love, seeking harmony with the infinite, which is we're going to be God, Jesus, and Holy Spirit, which are the eternal truth. Be not a cancer on the earth, be brave for nature, be brave for nature. My daughter showed us something extremely alarming, there were three stories that she read and we did present, this is the principle, I do believe it's outside of his control, so just not to reflect on him. But the stories involve depopulization, the separation of the nuclear family, and then socialism is preferable over capitalism. This is the type of material that's being rolled out to the students in the middle school, which is quite alarming. How do you take over a country? You don't take over, force infiltrate. And I truly believe what is happening through the Department of Education is pushing this type of ideology that's going to be a cancer to our society if we don't stop it.
True.
If we don't stop it. So, my husband's going to come up and he's going to present to you guys some of the readings. I've emailed everybody, so you guys should all have a copy of the readings so you can see it. It's all from the program.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'll try to read, this is pretty small. We represented the readings from Freckle that disturbed us. There were three stories, examples that you should have all received, be emailed. The first one explains author wanting to stay single because parents made marriage took, that his marriage was too difficult and they could not work on their career and he married at the same time. To some that may, may not be a concern, but there was a concern effort to remove the nuclear family in society as praised by Patrice Mary Collin, Colin Collers, who is the co-founder of BLM and proud Marxist. They removed her statement from the website. Some of the things it said in the era of social media, you know, online dating, the, the number of marriages have declined. The author goes on about saying how their parents had been married for years, but fought a lot, who, what parents don't like. My parents, they, they, they fight with things, they say they still love each other, but they argue. Doesn't sound like fun to me, so the author said. Also, they have spent a lot of time together. I want to focus to be a doctor when I grow up and on my career. I know it will take time, but how can I do that and be married at the same time? So, basically, it's saying, don't get married, focus on your, on your career. The second story talks about, like everything talks about in school, climate change. And I'm talking about climate change, I mean, you've been talking about that stuff for years. I remember being, oh, it's the ozone layer, I remember this global warming, it's all, you know, BS is what it is. One of our teachers last week told our daughter that our class regarding climate change, that the planet was better off without humans on it. They were alluding to the industrial revolution of humans' consumption. If humans were not on a planet, the planet would be balanced itself out. This sounded counter commitment, this is the commitment for my writers on a 1, 2, and 10 of the Georgia Gaia centers, which to reduce the population, control reproduction, fitness, diversity, and save the planet, all based by the World Economic Forum. They also did, the teacher also talked about how people that don't believe in climate change are conspiracy theorists, anti-vaxxers and all that stuff. So, I think that's, all of them to say something like that. The last story explains how Finland is better than the US and UK because they sacrificed their personal rights for the collective good and choice of socialism and how capitalism is bad. This sounds exactly like Henry Commande, the one in Georgia Gaia centers, as well as critical theory imposed by- This sounds exactly like Henry Commande and the Georgia Gaia centers, as well as critical theory imposed by Karl Marx. You say you aren't teaching CTR, you are correct. You're inoculating our case to become Marxist activists. How do you defend a country? Not by brute force, but by infiltrating through the kids. Wake up. You are complete, Freckle, it's all about Freckle, sorry. Let's move on to the next one.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, no, of course.
Caroline DeCray, Douglasville. The system of coming down of our children has got to stop. For the last two years, we've been left behind by the educational system during COVID, and the problem continues to the further. The 21, 22 school year of our about a new schedule at the high school. Instead of having eight periods a day or more that are about forty minutes long, they have blocks of classes now. And the blocks are about an hour and twenty minutes, plus like the flex and a lunch. This type of schedule allows for four classes a day. And my children say it's difficult to sit for an hour and twenty minutes in one class, especially if they don't enjoy the class or if the teacher doesn't know how to teach the curriculum. Having four classes a day is an issue when the child has one or two teachers absent that day. That means most of the day the child is out without instruction. When this happens, children sit in the annex cafeteria or the auditorium for most of the day, watching movies on Netflix and/or playing video games on their phones. I've been advised there have been at least, that there are only three subs, and this is clearly not enough subs to cover the number of teachers that are absent on a daily basis. My children say that the other teachers have to fill in for those subs, you know. And it's not fair, they probably have other things they haven't done. I just don't understand how this is an acceptable practice after all we've lost over the last two years. One of my closest friends was really upset. She told me that her son was recently called into Mr. Suboria's office because he had too many lates on his attendance sheet. This kid scored in detention for being late so many times. But if Mr. Suboria would have, you know, talked to the kid and said, you know, what's going on, he would have found out that the kid just doesn't have any motivation to come to school, to sit in an auditorium all damn day. That same child, two times in one week, had absolutely no classes. Not one class for two days. That's deplorable. We currently have an issue with guidance at the high school. They're short staffed, now the kids have to email to get an appointment. I want to know if that's going to be addressed soon to seniors graduating, that they need help at colleges and trade schools. I know you have budget meetings coming up, and I hope you take into consideration the frustration and the anger the parents have had over the last two years. We really shouldn't have had an increase, we probably should not have paid any taxes the last two years. We even maybe gotten a discount. But we've had it. Something has got to happen because our kids feel like it's prison here anymore. It's not a learning, it's not fun. We should be worried less about racism and friggin' pronouns and more about the children and their actual education.
True.
You can do it from there if you can talk loud enough. I know that, yeah. Go ahead.
I agree with everybody else that got up and spoke. The lady that got up first to talk about her children not being able to keep up with the iPad and that sort of thing. I agree very strongly with that because I'm very slow with that. But the thing of it is, our teaching should become a hand-to-hand thing. Just like a handshake, that's what we're meant to have in school. Our forefathers wouldn't have agreed to this at all, and they would have put their foot down. And I'm asking everybody here to try to come up with solutions as to what we can do before things get worse in this area where people are getting locked up for, I don't think that'll ever happen here for speaking out, but they, you know, it's happening. And it's coming. And we need to do something to stop it. And I think the first thing that we need to do is lay a better foundation on what we're aiming to build. Myself included. I wasn't able to keep up with my children as much as I'd like to because I was on the road a lot. And that's what I did. I kind of feel bad about it, but I don't because that's what I did and I was, I was pretty good. So I'll just leave you with that. That's it.
Thank you.
I'm Jim DeCray from Douglasville. There's been a lot of talk recently about equity in our schools and some serious questions about what is meant by equity. The definition of equity is the quality of being fair and impartial. That sounds great, and I feel that we should be fair and impartial. The definition of equality is the state of being equal, especially in status, rights, and opportunity. The mission statement of the Department of Community Relations and Equity Awareness is that Daniel Boone Area School District, Department of Community Relations and Equity Awareness, is committed to establishing and maintaining a positive culture while providing differentiated services to all students, staff, and families within our community and beyond. So if equality means being fair and impartial, why are we providing differentiated services? Who is getting this differentiated service and based on what criteria? Should all students and staff get the same services, have the same rights, status, and opportunities? Upon researching the difference between equity and equality, I found that according to George Washington University, equality means each individual or group of people is given the same resources or opportunities. Equity recognizes that each person has different circumstances and allocates the exact resources and opportunities needed to reach an equal outcome. The idea was shared by many other sources. If equity is the goal, who is allocating the resources? Because if certain students are getting more resources, that means other students are getting less resources. And I'm sure the district has limited resources. Are my children being given less resources because another student is deemed to have more needs? If these resources are being allocated based on students' academic requirements, then I agree that we should help each student achieve their full potential. However, equity is being linked to race, culture, sexual identity, disability, and economic status.
True.
We rarely hear equity mentioned without one of these qualifiers.
True.
In the past, there have been unfair practices carried out in the name of equity. We have frequently heard about priority quotas to provide more diversity in the workforce and affirmative action. But do we want that to be the way of the future for our children? Should any person be hired or not hired because of the color of their skin, ethnic origin, religion, or other qualifier? Should any student get more or less resources based on these same qualifiers? While I know there's been a history of racism in this country in the past, great strides have been made through the last several decades to combat this. Martin Luther King Jr. stated that "one day, this nation will rise up, live out the true meaning of its creed, that all men are created equal."
True.
Equality is what we should be striving towards for our children.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here tonight. For those who don't know me, my name is Breonna Lee, and I am a senior at Daniel Boone Area High School. I am here tonight to continue the dialogue on how to combat racism in our school district. I want to emphasize that I am personally speaking up because I want to see a change in my community. Students need a school environment where students aren't in fear of racial slurs and discrimination. Students of color need to be taken seriously instead of ignoring their issues, the bigger problem of racism in our community. For so many years, people of color have been ignored and not listened to. It is a repeated pattern that has affected so much people of color, especially in our Blazer community. The only difference between now and many years ago is that people are now starting to pay attention. People need to keep paying attention, please, because the students of color need to be heard and we are demanding more action towards combating racism in our school district. Students of color should not feel pressured to stay silent because they hear retaliation. Instead, students of color, sorry, students of color need to be validated for their identity and their differences need to be embraced. No student of color should have the burden of experiencing racism at Daniel Boone because it is simply too much to handle for any student. Students need to focus on their classes instead of worrying about the next time that they are experiencing discrimination. There needs to be a better future for students of color in Daniel Boone Area School District. I am graduating in a few months, and I would like to return to a school district where all students of color and all students are being treated fairly and equitably. I'm holding on to the optimism that my voice will encourage other students of color to speak out. I hope that younger students of color will not have to experience the hardships of being a student of color at Boone. There are a lot of people here tonight. I see Daniel Boone Area School District Administration, school board, teachers, students, parents, active community members, and others who all contribute together for the Blazer community. I want to leave you here tonight, one last question. What can you do personally to help combat racism in the school district? Whether it is a small action or a big impact, please think and reflect on what you can do to help students of color. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Denise Jean, I'm a junior at Daniel Boone High School. Since the last time I spoke here, some events have occurred on social media regarding racism at our school. A lot more of it has, like, you know, come from the bottom of wherever things go when it goes on social media, I don't know. My thing is that, I didn't write a thing because I hate writing because I'm not even going to say it was in the paper. My thing is that when I came to school, I was expecting to notice that this person hated, this person was being racist, this person was not upholding the morals and the values of our school, and that they would be treated as such, they would be punished. They would lose their privileges to things like prom and school trips and, I don't know, like a parking permit or something. Like you would do if you were late to class a few times or you didn't complete your novellons. But instead, I come back to school and I see that the student or students have exactly the same privileges that everyone else has. And my question is that, why aren't we effectively punishing these students? I'm not asking for these students to be expelled, but if you look in the handbook, under, I think, like, level three, four, and five, like, infractions or whatever, there's recommendations such as alternative schooling, therapy, suspension for a short amount of time. You can suspend these students all you want, but at the end of the day, you have to teach them what they did was wrong. If you send them home for three, like, three, four days, they're going to go home and be like, oh, cool, I can just chill, watch Netflix, and do nothing. But they don't understand what they did was wrong. You have to put them in a situation that makes them sit down with their actions and say, hey, maybe what I did wasn't right. Maybe I need to change what I'm doing to other people so that I can go to school and get an education. As other people, when they come to school, they don't have to fear their education. It's a learning experience. Suspension should be a learning experience, not a punishment. Which is basically where I'm coming from, from this. You can't just send students home and make them sit for three days. You have to give them something to sit with. Parents aren't doing anything. I'm going to be completely honest, I'm not a parent. I'm not a parent, honestly. The parents in this district, which, I come from the city. I'm from Philadelphia.
Can you dress us? Can you dress us?
Yeah, yeah. It's a lot more inclusive. The parents in this district, they come home and I saw on social media what the situation. She went home, she said, hey, Mom, I was canceled on social media for saying the N-word with a hard R in an auditorium full of students. What did her mom do? Her mom posted a picture on Instagram with the middle finger up saying, hey, F you if you think what my kid did was wrong. What are you teaching your kids when your kids come home and say, hey, I did this really hurtful thing? And you say, you know, whatever, you're my kid, what you did was right because I say it's right. So I believe that the parents aren't doing enough. The school is dismissing it, and we're all just supposed to be okay with it. And I'm not, because like I said last time, I represent this school, the school's not representing me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise, I'm sure you remember meeting my last meeting, but for those who don't, my name is Helen Lee, and I am a junior here at the high school. I am here tonight to readdress the concerns of the last meeting and some comments that were brought up. In no way are any of us saying that Daniel Boone as a whole is a racist school, a racist area, et cetera, et cetera. And neither are the people in this area. Daniel Boone has not been active enough in preventing or punishing these acts of racism that have happened within schools, such as Denise has said. This whole situation has blown over way too quickly, and I believe these students have not learned their lesson fully. These students are still back in the school and still not understanding what been said or did was wrong. These students will continue on with their lives and enter college and work for us without learning their lesson, and this leads to the possibility of spreading it even wider and hurting other people with it. I believe that we need to teach people that while we are different, we are all still human and deserving of respect and equal opportunities, such as Mr. Flowers' teachers when he visits other schools. We do not want people to be afraid of being or looking different. We want to embrace what makes us unique, and we want other people to understand that. I want people to know that I am different from you, but we are all still the same. I play sports for the school. By participating in clubs, I represent the school I play, and I want my school to represent me. Those students are also representing the school. And I don't think that we want their ideals or morals to represent all of us as a whole. I want to be proud to be a Blazer. I'm so tired of running for the respect and equity that my people deserve as humans, and hope you all will help us carry this burden and help us reduce it in the future. Thank you for your time.
Greetings. My name is Dani Hall, and my contacts are Jaka. And I am a senior at Daniel Boone High School. Racism is an issue in this district, and I'm sure you are all made very aware. And if you weren't, I hope us coming to the last week finally opened your eyes to this upsetting issue this district has. Too long has the school district left the issue of racism unattended, and too long has the district played a complete role in allowing racism to occur at the school. Incidence of racism does not expire. It latches onto its victims and grows and festers into an ugly thing called trauma. And from that, distrust and a bigger divide between all racial groups. Depression is the most commonly reported condition across BIPOC, Black Indigenous People of Color. Additionally, racial trauma can increase the risk of Black Indigenous People of Color meeting the criteria for PTSD. This is quoted from MHANational.org. Racism isn't just a small act or something we can simply ignore. It goes on to prevent bright students from equal access to opportunities and resources. So how do we begin to fix this? It all begins with education. We as humans aren't more racist. But due to the casual racism embedded within the education due to America's shameful past, we are continuing to perpetuate it. So I just suggest that we move to decolonize our education and that we implement more preventative measures to attack racism and extremism. We should be honest about our shortcomings as a country and teach the cultural and actual weight of our history instead of watering it down. Moving forward, we should acknowledge our differences as individuals and acknowledge that there is not a one-size-fits-all solution. Rather, we should celebrate our differences and uplift each other for overcoming our own hardships. We can punish racist students all day, but if we are not actively working to positively influence those students and teach them how racism directly affects Black students and students of color, we will continue to see racism within this country. Because everyone here should know, kids are the future. They will become doctors, engineers, politicians, and so much more. If we remain complacent and allow kids to continue to be racist, we're allowed to violate the cycle to continue. we are allowing a violent cycle to continue. Let's work to abolish racism. Let's do better for our Black students and our students of color. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tiffany Hui, and I'm a senior at Daniel Boone Area High School. As you can see, some of the same students, including myself, have returned from the last meeting. And if you don't recall from that last meeting, we got up and spoke about our personal experiences here and our students of color at Daniel Boone. And to be brutally honest, what followed afterwards was the most disheartening and disturbing experiences. To have our identity completely invalidated in your board and then proceeded to have our voices overshadowed and sent to the awful. But enough of that. Because we want change in the Daniel Boone Area School District. Daniel Boone is supposed to foster a safe, diverse, and growing learning environment. However, it hurts to say that that is not something that I experienced here at the high school. It is disappointing, it is frustrating, and exhausting. I want the administration to take action by uplifting the voice of the students of color. Take accountability and hold others accountable. The administration and staff should make their schools into more accepting and non-discriminatory environments. Start with the young students, for example. Educate them in topics such as equality, equity, diversity, inclusion, and basic human rights. There's nothing wrong with that. Build a more inclusive curriculum for all students, people represented. And this goes out to everyone here in general that implement more valuable learning tools that teach students that they're all unique in their own ways, whether it be race, gender, et cetera. But also emphasize that those differences are what make each student strong in their own way. Recognize the importance of respect and equity. Reproman those students and staff who are discriminatory. Hold them accountable and set up a definite mechanism in education. Education is the most important tool, and as educators, you all know that. And to end off, I'm going to use this little saying that the staff can tell us and is all around the school, but be the change. We students have been fighting for change for a while, and this goes beyond the board meeting. So what we want from the school board is for you all to also be the change. Take action. Recognize struggles that students of color go through. Take in our words that we say here tonight and in the future, and collaborate with students. Make Daniel Boone the safe and diverse learning environment that we all deserve. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I did want to point out two things that seem kind of tripe on the tournament anyway. Well, one of them isn't. This is Sunshine Week, which is a celebration of open government. Someone brought up that, you know, sometimes they can be concerned about whether or not we will always be able to continue to bring our viewpoints to the, to the school district in these meetings. As long as I'm sitting here, this will be an open dialogue for you, I guess, monologue for you, to say whatever's on your mind to us. I do appreciate the fact that all of you take the time out of your schedules to come here. I really do appreciate it. I know sometimes maybe you don't think I do, but I do. And, yeah, that was the only thing I wanted to say, I guess. Can I get a motion to adjourn? And second, we are adjourned. Everybody have a good night.